Hello, everyone. How are you all tonight?
Hi, Rosemary.
Hey, Rosemary.
I'm just looking to see who's here. I hear Jimmy. There you are. And I see Steve Phan.
Yeah, I see the council. I don't see the planning commission yet.
They're slackers.
I haven't been outside all day. Is it cold still?
It's not too bad. It's cold this morning, but it's not too bad right now. I like it's cold weather.
Jimmy, what are you talking about?
I love it's cold. I'll forget about six inches tomorrow.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
I said, I hope.
I wouldn't mind if it'd be pretty and snow and look, you know, have a pretty snow every once in a while, but it's always just old gray skies in the winter.
Yep.
Cold.
Rosemary, where was you last night? There was all talking about you on Facebook and you weren't chiming in.
Were they really? I didn't pay any attention.
You know who was?
Would it be, would it be one of those people that lost by seventy something percent?
Yes.
Or the somebody related to that person.
It was fun.
I did not pay any attention.
That's good.
There's Mr. Wilson from home. See you.
Next door to me. Where are you, Mr. Wilson?
Mayor.
There you are.
When you open the meeting and you'll ask them to vote to have a online meeting, right? Okay, and then when we get to public comments, there aren't any verbal oral public comments. Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Paige.
I've changed my screen all around. It's different than it normally is. But yeah, I will, I was gonna say, I will ask them to send them to Josh or I will ask them in the chat box.
Yeah, and for us, it shows up as Q and A, I guess because we're presenters or officially in the meeting.
Can y'all send a shout, can somebody forward shout out the link to the Zoom meeting?
Okay.
Somebody.
Okay, there you go. Hold on, I just missed you.
I'm seeing really weird stuff, sorry.
Hey, you, that wasn't my dog last night. You know I don't have dogs.
I didn't think so, but you're sounding like it. Where, where do I send it, Jimmy?
Uh, just his email.
Okay.
He's trying to get on and can't find the link.
Mayor, I just took care of it.
All right, thanks.
You got it. Okay, thanks.
There's my next door neighbor sitting outside and I've been saying how cold it was.
It ain't cold today. It's my cold today.
Freezing.
It's cold to me.
Mayor, it is my cold today.
It's cold on Cherry Circle.
Yeah, it's cold.
It's the good weather today.
You know it's cold, too cold to eat chicken, so it's cold.
I had some bit fried chicken today for my lunch.
Glad you wrapped me up somebody to me.
When Johnny breaks out that hat, puts that hat on that head, it's cold.
Yeah, now babe, it won't warm my head.
Hey, Josh King, are you on there somewhere?
Hi, Rosemary. What can I do for you?
Hey, um, don't leave the webinar until after we make sure the Q and A chat stuff gets saved.
Okay, we'll do.
All right, I'll hang in there with you till the bitter end.
I think we set it up so that it records it as a separate file, but we will make sure, we'll make sure it's documented in multiple ways before we end the meeting.
Thank you.
And Josh, you gonna let me know when you officially start the Zoom meeting and are you sharing it Facebook and that kind of stuff?
Yes, Mayor, I will let you know before we go live, which I'll do here in just a second. And then I'll let you know as soon as we are broadcasting live on Facebook.
Okay.
We don't want any surprises.
Well, I just want to be able to share it when it does go live, so thank you.
Where is everybody at?
They're on shore, like city council.
We're the cool kids, okay?
Mr. Wilson's here.
Let's see, we may have several callers. I see fifteen participants.
Oh, oh.
Steve Phan, Linda Love, Steve Camp, Dustin Gillian from Planning, Johnny Wilson from Planning, Latisha representing Planning on the legal side, William McCord Planning, yeah, you're right, Planning Commission, not so well represented.
Alana just emailed me and I've sent her the link again. I know John Purrier is on his way back from an appointment, so he may be joining us late.
Okay.
But I'm gonna hit the broadcast button, which means the public is gonna be allowed into the meeting.
Okay.
So I'm gonna do that in five, four, three, two, one. Members of the public are now joining us and I'm setting it up to go live on Facebook on the city's webpage. This is going to just take me a minute. I'm playing the role of Jeff this evening.
You're doing very well at it.
We have three attendees from the public. Mary Turner with GNRC, Suzanne Simon with our Planning Office, and Michelle and/or Pascal Givans.
Okay, thank you.
We are now broadcasting live on Facebook.
Okay, give me just one minute to get, ah, there it is. I'm going to share it and then we will be ready to begin the meeting.
Do we ever get Chappanel hooked up?
I bet he joins this thing. You guys can, Josh, you or whomever can update us if we need updates on anyone who's to be participating. And I guess I will call the role this evening. Is that correct?
I'm ready to do that if you'd like for me to.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that's all I need to know. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Josh, once we do the roll call, I introduce public comments or the option of how people submit public comments. And then we will adjourn after we're all through. So, thank you, everyone. It is 5:04 PM. I'm sorry, we're getting started just a few minutes late, trying to make sure that we are live on all of our platforms this evening. But I'm Paige Brown. I'm the mayor of the City of Gallatin, and I'm delighted to welcome you all to this special Plan Gallatin meeting. You know, we've been working on this for a really long time and we're excited to get back together again and take another step forward so that Gallatin will once again have an up-to-date, long-range plan as we look forward to the future of our city. I know that everyone that's with us tonight, whether you serve on the Planning Commission, on the City Council, or just a member of the public participating, that you want for our community your own version of what is a vibrant, economically healthy, sustainable, and attractive community. And, and I know we've all have probably different ideas about what that looks like, but we all want the best for our city and we're all working together to get there. So we're going to go through some exercises tonight. I understand that we're gonna get some homework. Josh King is gonna be our very special facilitator and we're just excited to get things going. Of course, before we can actually conduct an official meeting, we do need to have a vote that we hold this meeting electronically. So I'm gonna read something to you all and then I will entertain a motion to hold this meeting virtually and we will vote on it. This says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number sixteen, number thirty-four, number fifty-one, number sixty, and number sixty-five, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. November eighteenth, twenty twenty, joint work session of the Gallatin Council and Planning Commission will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom meeting on the link that you see there on the screen. And that link should also be on our Facebook page and on our website. You can alternatively call in at four seven zero three eight one two five five two or four seven zero two five zero nine three five eight if you would like to listen and you would enter for that the webinar ID eight seven zero two five five three five six three seven. This meeting is also streaming on our website and on our Facebook page. Now, this evening, we are going to do things a bit differently. We're not going to have public comment where people speak, but we do have the opportunity for the public to submit their comments. We appreciate your feedback on Facebook, but we really need you to send those comments to us so we have an official record. You can do that by emailing josh.king@gallatinTN.gov. And if you're on the Zoom platform with us, you can actually enter your comments into, I, I think it shows for everyone as a Q and A, but it could be that on the attendee side it shows as an chat box. But regardless, you can enter your comments in that way as well as email them if that is your preference. But we're going to begin, oh, I have to have a vote on that meeting, so I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion to approve that we hold the meeting electronically by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Overton. I'm asking if there anyone with any, if there's anyone with any questions.
Second by Councilman Alexander.
Well, I thought that's what I said. I'm sorry.
Overton and Overton.
Oh, well.
We do favor quite a bit.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, you don't favor, so I apologize. So I do have a motion, a second, are there any questions about holding the meeting electronically? If not, I'm gonna ask that Ms. Bates call the roll for the vote, please.
Yes, and what I would like to do is when I call your name, if you'll just vote yes and then let me know that you're present too. That'd be great and we'll get those two over with. Councilman Alexander.
Yes, present.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Yes, present.
Councilman Phan.
Yes, here.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes. Councilwoman Love.
Yes, here.
Councilman Overton.
Yes, and present.
Planning Commissioner Fennell, he hasn't joined his ship. Commissioner Harris.
Present and approved.
Commissioner Hibbler.
Present and approved.
Commissioner Organe. Commissioner Purrier. Commissioner Strather. And Commissioner Wilson. I know he's here. He's just muted. But I see the man. Yes, he, thank you very much. We are done with the roll call and the vote.
Okay, so we have twelve members total who are to be participating and I believe that we have had a vote of one, two, six in favor. We're not voting on anything this evening. I, I think I probably do need another vote to proceed with holding this meeting electronically.
I had a count of eight.
Oh, you had a count of eight?
We have the two together.
Paige, did you count Johnny Wilson?
I did not count him as a yes, but if he were a yes, that would give us a vote of seven to five with twelve total.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. That gives us a majority vote. Are we good to go with that, either Ms. Ha Macaulay or Ms. Alexander?
Yes, as long as we have a majority. And Mayor, I don't think you counted either. And you can, you're part of the council, so you would have a yes vote as well.
Okay, so that would make it eight, twelve. Okay, very well, we will take that then. And with that, we will proceed with this electronic meeting to further our Plan Gallatin efforts. I will remind everyone attending from the public again, if you'd like to submit comments this night, this evening, we really want you to do that. We're going to ask that tonight, unlike during a regular meeting, that you enter your comments either in the question and answer box on the Zoom meeting or you email them to josh.king@gallatinTN.gov. And if you have any questions about that email or anything, you can enter that in the question and answer box too. But with that, I'm gonna say again, thank you, thank you again to everyone for being with us this evening. I know that you all give a lot of time to the City of Gallatin. It is valuable and it is appreciated. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Josh King and we'll get started.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the mayor stole a little bit of my, of my thunder with those first two. The chat function is enabled for tonight's meeting, so if you're a member of the public, feel free to use the chat function at the bottom of the screen. We will collect all of your information. And the presentation and the toolbox document will be posted to our www.plangallatin.org website as soon as we can after this meeting. So again, look for it on www.plangallatin.org. This meeting will also is, will be recorded and is being broadcast live on Facebook. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bill McCord to give us an introduction about where we are within the Plan Gallatin drafting process. And with no further ado, Bill, yep, you're here. Bill, take it away.
Welcome, council and planning commissioners. We've been going through this effort for quite a while. What we're going, what we're doing, just as a reminder, is updating our comp plan. Essentially, what we're actually doing is replacing our current comp plan with this new plan we've been working on for, well, it's been over two years now. We first started this process in the spring of 2018. We've had several parties, if you want to call it that, or meetings. One of those was La Long Party and some of you may have attended that. That was out here at City Hall and it ended up raining that day. But nonetheless, we had good participation. We've also had other community meetings where we've established goals and objectives. We've also identified our themes, major themes for our comp plan, and we've gone through a scenario planning process. We've also, a little after that time is when COVID hit and we had to rethink our strategy for public We've also, a little after that time, is when COVID hit, and we had to rethink our strategy for public participation. We were able to do that and started conducting meetings virtually. And we also had some workshops, including our scenario planning, visual preference and visual preference workshops virtually, including small groups. So most recently, there was a presentation to council on September the 8th about the results of the visual preference survey. And that has now evolved into focusing on multiple chapters, and we're formulating the chapters and building the outline. But tonight, we're gonna focus on our land use policies, our character areas, and somewhat of our design guidelines as well. So with that, I would like to send it back to Josh to start this process, to start identifying, first of all, some of our major findings as it relates to the strategy we want to apply for developing land use, which is really the bedrock of the comp plan itself. We do have a land use map now. It's a character area map, which is part of Gallatin on the Move, and some of you may be familiar with it. It essentially establishes areas similar to maybe what you see as a zoning map for appropriate uses. So we're not gonna really throw all of the good stuff out of the Gallatin on the Move plan. We want to retain a lot of stuff that still would be applicable, but fit it into the current framework that we're developing. So let me give it back to Josh, and we'll start with individual presentations on this strategy.
Thank you, Bill. This section we are referring to is Chapter 7. The official working title is Proposed Character Area Typology and Nomenclature. So if you refer to it as Chapter 7, we will not be offended. That is very much still a working title. So what we've done, the idea is to break it down into four, essentially four layers. So if you think about this like building a pizza, we've got, we've got the base, we've got the sauce, we've got the toppings, and then we've got the extra toppings on top of the regular toppings. So we, together collectively with our partners at GNRC, have developed these five base characters. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dustin Shane, who is one of our planners here on staff. And he's gonna go through these five, actually, I'm sorry, I'm covering base characters. We've developed these five base characters, and you can think of these as different types of dough for your pizza. The first one is natural area. This is, this is generally going to be the lake. This is gonna be large, open space tracks, generally on the very fringes of the city. The image to the right is actually just north of the city, off of Old Gallatin Road, and I can't think of the cross street right now. But southeastern commercial properties is letting us use the imagery that they shot for that property. So generally, you're gonna find this is wilderness, this is forest, this is, again, large water bodies like the lake. Rural countryside, this, again, is gonna be on the very fringes of the city. This is open space, this is farms, this is almost exclusively private space. There is not a lot of city services that are available out there. And you're gonna find that the development pattern is very informal. Barns might be closer to the road than houses. Houses might be set where it's more convenient for them, for the property owners to look over their fields than it would be in more of a traditional subdivision. You're gonna find very, very low levels of development. And again, this is the very fringes of our city. Suburban, this is, as the name implies, a very suburban development pattern. This is primarily single-family residential houses on lots of various sizes. This is sort of that extent between rural and what we would consider urban as more of the in-town neighborhoods. This is gonna be, generally, most of the space you see is gonna be privately owned on individual lots. City services are available, and/or there's a planned capacity. We're gonna see more contiguous open spaces, but generally smaller than some of the larger tracks like natural or farmland. Primarily residential, and it's a medium-low level of development. And this is some imagery on the left-hand side of the screen that shows sort of some what a suburban area might look like. General urban, this is gonna be the more intensive development. We call this a medium-high level of development. Again, primarily residential with contiguous open spaces. City services are available with adequate capacity. And this is gonna be, generally, you're gonna find a mix of public and private spaces. This might be small-city parks, this could be HOA-owned properties, and the lot sizes are generally going to be on the smaller side. City core is, as the name implies, it is gonna be your immediate downtown area and probably just a few blocks away from it. So this is the most intensive development in the city. You're gonna see a high mix of uses, a mix of residential and commercial, some very light industrial uses, retail mixed with offices. This is generally downtown and the immediate vicinity. You're gonna have a variety of different building styles and heights. The spaces are generally going to be shared. You're not gonna have individual property lines generally that have their own space. A lot of it is gonna be public space in plazas, or in our case, downtown, we have the square. And so with all of these different, this first base layer, we kind of give you an illustration of roughly how that could work. And so it's important to note that as we go through each of these different layers, we're gonna take a break after each part to ask questions and engage with all of you on your feedback on the images that you're seeing, how you feel about those, if, are they things that you want to discuss later in our one-on-one meetings? And also, generally, the approach that we're taking with this different layered strategy, it's gonna give the city a little bit more control over future development, and a little bit more proactive about what the community, establishing a community vision for future development, rules, policies, and procedures that are gonna be put into place. That's a lot of Ps in one sentence. So we're gonna, we're gonna stop here. This is the end of the base, so you think this is the crust of the pizza. Again, if there's any feedback, feel free to stop me. Questions? Comments? Our strategy tonight is all of these layers are gonna build on each other. So you're gonna see the next, the next area, which is centers, which is gonna be presented by Dustin, how each of the layers build on top of each other. So Dustin, I am gonna turn it over to you.
All right, thanks, Josh. So I guess if you had the dough on that one, this might be more like the pepperoni. I'm not sure. But it's gonna be a different idea than the base. The base, more of a far-reaching area, more of an overlay type thing, and these are more like concentrated nodes, more like anchors. Next slide. So it's an easy way to think about the first four of these, is that they're basically the same thing, just different levels of intensity. Going all the way from downtown is the most intense, all the way down to what we're gonna call the rural cluster. Next slide. There's two exceptions, and that's Employment Center and Activity Center, and those are kind of their own animal. Next slide. So downtown, everybody's familiar with that. There's only one in the city. It's very walkable. It's got a high mix of uses. It's made for pedestrians, shared parking, different architectural styles. Next slide. And this is kind of a breakdown of the space in downtown, what makes it special. You see, there's minimal building setbacks, scale for pedestrians, lots of different uses, different stores and shops. There's a, there's a dedicated area for people, which makes it a very pleasant place that people like to come to. And you see that the parking's usually shared on the street or in shared lots. Next slide. The Village Center is kind of the same thing, but just a step down. It's gonna be kind of like a local downtown for a different part, a certain area of town. It's still gonna have a mix of uses. It's still gonna be pedestrian scale. Next slide. You're still gonna have a similar architecture. You'll notice the downtown type of buildings with the commercial on the ground floor and office and residential sometimes on the upper floors. You're still gonna have that, that low, minimal building setback. Next slide. Laborhood Center, same idea. You're just kind of moving it down a step more, kind of a local little node for a certain neighborhood. Next slide. An example here, this is in Franklin, it's called Jamison Station. You can see you've got some kind of downtown-type buildings for commercial activity. Just near that, towards the left of your screen, you've got some attached, single-family housing. So that provides kind of a more dense anchor and support to those businesses. And then as you move out from there, you're going back to more of the detached, single-family pattern. But you can see the idea here is more concentrated nodes. And this is kind of gonna be the opposite of what you think of as like strip development, where you have kind of miles of parking lots and big-box stores. This is concentrating things in a downtown-like style to create synergy and economic activity. Next slide. And it can be, it doesn't have to be historic cores, you know. These can be built new. As you see here, this is a lifestyle center, but it's still got a lot of the same characteristics. Next slide. Rural cluster is gonna be the lowest form of this type of center character area. You'll see there's a lower mix of uses, different kinds of setbacks. Next slide. It's gonna have the same idea, though. It's, there will be bigger setbacks because you've got a higher rate of speed on those roads, a lot of times. But it's basically that crossroads feel, and it's still gonna be kind of like a little mini downtown for a rural area. Next slide. Employment Centers, there's gonna be some similarities, but there's less of a mix of uses. And it's gonna be basically trying to support large employment centers and office buildings. And it's gonna have a regional draw. Next slide. Here, this is an example from Cool Springs. You can see from the picture on the right, you've got mid-rise office buildings. You've got ample parking, different corporate anchors. But then, if you look on the left, that's the same area. You see that Tree Line Boulevard? That's the same, the same area that you're looking at there. So you can still create a pedestrian-centered experience even while you're providing for parking and for a large mix of different office and employment uses. And you could even have some residential or some townhomes back behind there and create a really mixed-use environment. Next slide. And then Activity Center, the final one, it's kind of its own animal. It's gonna take lots of different forms, you know, wedding venues, marinas, state parks. They're gonna have a very regional draw. In Gallatin, we might think of Ball State or the airport, just kind of their own kind of thing that's gonna draw from a larger area. Next slide. And I'll turn it back over to Josh.
Thank you, Dustin. So we've just randomly populated a couple of these different centers. Within any community or within any neighborhood, there can be more than one of these based on the intensity. But what's also, what we like about using this is that as the community grows naturally and organically, we can shift within these center characters and allows more incremental development versus having a steadfast rule for the next 20 years that you can only be one small, one-story dwelling unit with, or one-story commercial building with a sea of parking in front of you. We can allow some of these things to change and grow over time as our community and our need and our transportation changes. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to questions. And again, I'm gonna remind anyone who's on Facebook, we are only capturing the comments through Zoom, so I encourage you to join the Zoom meeting. And if you are one of our guests on the Zoom meeting, feel free to use the chat function at the bottom of the screen to leave any feedback on what you're seeing, what you're hearing, or what we will be discussing shortly.
Josh, I have something.
Yes, Mayor.
Actually, two things. I don't know that we clearly introduced you or Dustin or Bill. I just want people to be aware that Bill McCord is our city planner, that you, Josh King, are our Assistant City Planner, and that Dustin Shane is also a planner with the City of Gallatin. The other question I have is, I need you to go back to that slide that had the nine-to-five cast on it and explain those different things that I did not get.
So, we have a broad range of ages that work together in our office. So we've been trying to incorporate pop culture references to a lot of the slides for people to understand. So we have anything from, if you're one of the more younger members of our staff, the office, if you're approaching middle age like me, there was a movie in the late 90s, early 2000s called Office Space. Or if you're one of our more senior persons in the office, we have Dolly Parton and the cast of Nine to Five.
The one that I recognize. No, I knew the one. Okay, well, I just wanted, I just wanted, I needed some explanation on that. Now, if I'm curious, somebody else is gonna be too, so, thank you.
We, these are all areas that we interact with on a daily basis across the city. But we, we can sometimes get a little bit too technical in planning. So we want to incorporate things to help members of the public, members of the Planning Commission and City Council understand things better or be able to remember them with the multitude of things you have going on in your lives. So that's, that's our take at pop culture references. So our third is, our third is called corridor character, which is sort of the cheese of a pizza and kind of helps unite all of the different pieces. And Jillian Ogden, one of our more senior planners here at the City of Gallatin, is gonna be presenting on these seven different types, but don't let that number scare you. We're gonna break it down pretty simply, and hopefully, quite not, probably not as memorable as the last ones, but hopefully we'll still make it memorable. Jillian?
Yes, thank you, Josh. I thought you were gonna make that cheese reference, so I was kind of waiting for it. So yes, we are going to talk about these different corridor types. So these are your streets, your sidewalks, and your trails. And they connect all of your different centers and work within the base levels that we've already talked about. Next slide, please. So first, you have your natural corridors. These are typically just found in nature. They aren't typically man-made, or if they are, they're not intentionally or formally man-made. They are just paths that, that are created naturally out, out in our environment. Next slide, please. Then you get to your more formal pedestrian-level ways. So you have your formal greenways, your multi-use trails. These can be very formally planned, like we have our very formal Gallatin Greenway here right near downtown. They can be more informal paths through nature, but they are generally more prioritized towards pedestrian traffic, bicyclist. They aren't for motorized use. Next slide, please. Then you have your rural byways. These are the types of streets that you find out, find out in your county traditionally. You also will find these out on the outskirts of town. They're known as the more scenic route, that you have a lot of state lots, you have residential in these areas, you have farms in these areas. They're usually well-preserved, and the road is a means to travel in these areas. You don't have a lot of buildings up near the road. The speed limits are usually a little too high for that to be safe. And these roads are also, usually don't have curb and gutter. It's very much appropriate for a rural setting on the outskirts of town. Next slide, please. Then you have your industrial access. These are specific, for example, to our Gallatin Industrial Center and anywhere, anywhere along Airport Road, for example. These are usually not the ideal situation for a pedestrian. It's not a super pleasant experience to walk along on a sidewalk along an industrial way where you're gonna have heavy truck traffic. So these are usually prioritize that local industrial and logistics hub. So these are usually prioritize that local industrial and logistics hub traffic that just has higher weight limits and just higher demand in that way, less walkable, much more about that commercial vehicular traffic. Next slide, please. For your neighborhood connectors, I did pull an example of Kennesaw Boulevard as a pretty solid example here in town, where you have this main spine road that really connects your established residential neighborhoods with the more commercial areas of town. So for Kennesaw, for example, would be the commercial area up front of Kennesaw, straight into Nashville Pike, which leads you to the rest of town. These roads favor both the vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. Here, you have very clear sidewalks on both sides of the street. You have trees that make there be more of a barrier between the street itself and those walkways, so both types of traffic are really kept in mind with streets of this level. And they are really the connectors for neighborhoods to the rest of their community. Next slide, please. For your commercial corridors, I've shown two very different examples here. The example on your left is your more vehicular-focused traffic, which is areas of Nashville Pike. Your example on the right is your more pedestrian-focused, which is obviously your downtowns where the roads are a little bit smaller and they cater a little bit more to the pedestrian. They're more at that scale. If you'll recall from our visual preference surveys in the past, the image on the left or images like that are usually not viewed as favorably because there's not as much appeal as a more downtown area, which is more favorable to walking into people and interaction, and cars and people usually work together more versus here where it's very dominated by the vehicle. Now, that's not to say that when you have a commercial corridor that has to be lined with commercial strip centers or commercial areas the whole way. Nashville Pike is a good example of a commercial corridor that changes as it goes. It's very different over near Foxland as it moves through near Tulip Popper and up here towards Highway 109 and into downtown. So these corridors can change quite a lot, even though they are classified as a commercial corridor catering more to that local commerce use. Next slide, please. And then finally, you have your regional connectors. So these are your major highways. Here in town, that's Vietnam Veterans, that's Highway 109. These connect your cities to each other, more so than your neighborhoods to each other. So higher speed limits, you don't have access to these roads at, they're wider intervals. You don't have a lot of uses right off of these roads, but they are vital to connecting you throughout your town and throughout Middle Tennessee. So if you go to the next slide, please. I'm going to turn it back over to Josh, but those were the different kinds of corridors that really connect the centers that we've already talked about, and we have them all here in Gallatin.
Thank you, Gillian. So on the screen, we have how the corridors start to interact with the centers. So you can start to see kind of how all the linkages will start working together. And early on in the Plan Gallatin exercise, I think it was at the Hilton Garden Inn, we sat down with all of you on the City Council and on the Planning Commission and through a couple of public outreaches since, and have worked to start to identify, generalize where some of these areas are, and we're going to continue to refine that and present that back to all of you in the very near future. We're continuing to work with our partners at GNRC to ensure that we've fully captured all of that data and can start to populate a map on what some of these corridors and some of these centers and generally what some of these base areas would look like in the real world. So here is an example of sort of how, what I was just talking about, how some of them would come together in terms of here within the city. Again, this is just for illustration purposes. I don't want anyone to think that we're cutting out half of the city. It's just what I could fit on the screen and still have it legible. So this is a very rough example of how these different ideas work together in the real world, and our map that we're working on with GNRC, based on all of your input, will be a lot more refined than this very crude drawing in front of you. So at this point, are there any questions on how these different puzzle pieces fit together? I know once we have this put on a real map of the city, we'll definitely have more input and more questions, but at this point, does anyone have any questions how these puzzle pieces fit together?
I just have one question. Is there any emphasis put on any particular area that's more essential for development than others?
That is a great question, Councilman Alexander. What I heard you ask is, is there any weight, or any of these weighted, for more development or less development?
Yeah, first.
Okay. That is a great question, and that is a great lead-up to our next slide. So I'll explain the next slide and the next concept in just a second. I just want to make sure I saw Matt Harris pop back up again.
I've been here, but I do have a question. Something you mentioned a few minutes ago was the ability for the new comp plan to be able to change and grow with the city as it changes. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. With the center's character, we start with very rural, which is a gas station, crossroads, and that scales all the way up to a downtown. So if we've identified a neighborhood center and the intensity of that use is starting to go up, there's development pressure, and the city says, you know, we have the infrastructure. This area has really changed, and we want the development here to be a little bit more intense than it currently is. We can, through this process, through the process of working with City Council and Planning Commission, we can move that from, we'll say, neighborhood center to village center, which would ultimately, when all of this is translated in the zoning ordinance, would allow a more intensive use in that area.
Okay. And that's, I think, my understanding, that's different than the Gallatin on the Move 2020 Plan, which was more rigid in that it defined areas and there really wasn't the ability to change them, even though as time went by, the circumstances changed.
Yes. Gallatin on the Move was state-of-the-art of its time, and we have to remember, when that plan was adopted, the 386 extension to this, to Gallatin, was less than a year old. So if you can imagine the amount of changes that we've seen and just generally how Middle Tennessee has changed as a region since that plan was adopted. Our goal is with Plan Gallatin is to allow that plan to be adjusted and have it more as a living, breathing document that we can change as the city's needs change over time.
Matt, the Gallatin on the Move plan had your more traditional land use patterns, but they called them character areas, and they had pretty rigid boundaries. So this creates a tiered level, as we've kind of used the analogy of a pizza, where you can stack these various character areas on top of each other in appropriate settings, particularly as they involve more intensive uses and a variety of uses, as well as takes into consideration the pathways or the ways to move around between those uses. So it provides a little more flexibility. It will, I think, be able to be amended in such a way that, as Josh gave an example of changing a center character area, we'll also be able to make adjustments to the base character areas as well, similar to the amendment process we have now, but it'll be more fluid.
Okay. No, that's good to hear.
And the last is a direct lead-in with Councilman Alexander's question. The last is sort of the cherry on top of our pizza, or pineapple if you're of that sort, is it's called extent of focus. And so there's four themes that emerge from it. There's preserve, which is, the city's vision is, we generally like this area the way it is, maybe a couple of houses need to be painted, but otherwise, we're pretty happy with it. Nurture is, this area of town, this neighborhood, this subdivision, it's going pretty well. We're pretty happy with the direction that it's going. Just a little bit more effort, and this will fully achieve the vision of the community. Sustain is, this neighborhood's already changing, we just need to put, we just need a little bit more effort and a little bit more help. And then accelerate is a neighborhood or an area that would have the greatest amount of change. That is, we would look at all of our plans, policies, tools, and infrastructure to make sure that everything is aligned to support the community vision for that area. So each one of these would be applied in a different area, and Dustin put together, for illustration purposes, how this general idea would be applied in the real world. So this is off of Big Station Camp, at Station Camp High School and Station Camp Middle School. We have the Wellington Farms Apartments, the retreat at Hidden Creek. There's a central natural area corridor with a, I believe there's a stream in there, which helps buffer both the schools from the residential and the residential from the schools. So generally, this area is pretty well-built. We don't expect a whole lot of changes from it from a community vision standpoint. So the extent of focus is preserve. The corridor character is natural area here with a base character area of suburban and an overall character area of Activity Center. And then Big Station Camp has a corridor character of commercial. And again, this is just for illustration purposes only. So if you happen to own this large lot right down here, we are not changing anything for you today. This is just for illustration and discussion purposes. So is there any feedback on how these different layers stack together?
Isn't that where McCain Station is going to be across the street also?
McCain Station is in this neighborhood. I believe it's somewhere right around here. Actually, McCain Station is on this street. Is it north or south of here?
It's east of Big Station Camp, right across the street there, on the upper right-hand corner of the image.
Right in there.
Yeah. What you have there is a little bit older image. You do have the Reserve or Revere, I guess they're called Revere, apartment complexes that are up in that area as well now. So McCain Station's next to that.
Josh, just to be able to understand, so if I'm thinking through the example correctly, so the center character Activity Center encompasses everything on the screen essentially, and then that suburban's, you know, kind of an area inside of that Activity Center that's got maybe more restrictions or more intensive uses, is that how that builds?
Um, yes, but reversed. So the base character would be suburban, the schools would be an Activity Center. They have more students than employees, so they're not an employment center, but it is an area that has a significant traffic, and it's something within our community that, you know, we generally like that, whether you have students or not, you generally want a high-quality, high-functioning education system. So generally, that area works pretty well. And it's, so it's base character suburban, Activity Center is the center character.
Gotcha. Yeah, Commissioner Harris, I probably should have drawn that red square to be bigger than everything.
Okay.
Because you're correct on that, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Yeah, I get the concept. It's good.
Josh, I want to ask a question, because it's the thing that I've always struggled with, even back when we did the 2020 Plan, way before I was mayor, and I struggle with it now, and I think it's something that we all think about and we really can't articulate. And you're probably going to not feel comfortable with a great answer either, but you might have a brilliant perspective that will help us all. But my thought is, is how do we put these areas, particularly like the areas that we don't foresee a lot of future development in? How do we put that kind of, not overlay, but character area on somebody's property and not damage the value of their property? Does that make sense? I mean, because we have these areas, we think they're beautiful, we'd love to preserve them, but the City of Gallatin can't go buy them at what their value is. And to me, every property owner in the city who has, you know, paid for land for decades and decades should have a right to do something with their land where they can get a return on their investment.
Let me get to this page, going back to that. Do you not think that that has something to do with like the Nashville Pike corridor? Where we get the overlay on that?
Well, no, I see that overlay as more like the overlay on the Historic District. That's something that was agreed to and bought into, not so for all these, you know, parcel owners that, you know, basically farmed their land at one point, but, you know, over the years, you know, I've watched people sell and sell and sell, and they're thinking, at some point, I'm going to have to sell, but it's not right for us to go in and lock down and say, no, you can't make money on that.
What's the difference?
Well, 109 is a good example out where they're doing the public and stuff right now. I mean, that's farmland forever. Property owners bought them to, you know, do commercial stuff on them, and all the way around there now, where all the farmland was, they're all going to be developing all those farms.
Well, but what I'm saying is, you know, so say we put a no-development character area on something, well, that kind of shuts it down for that property owner. But Councilman Hayes, I mean, like I was saying, the big difference between that Nashville Pike corridor, everybody that's there went there under that overlay. That wasn't just the way it's always existed and evolved versus how, or agreed to it, because they...
But not everybody went there under that overlay. No, they didn't.
But they had to agree to it when it was put in.
But...
When it was put in because of Walmart.
Yeah. No, they didn't have to, and it was put in after, way after Walmart. And if you look at it, what has changed now is what's behind there has changed so much.
And I think that was part of the plan, but...
No, that was not part of the plan.
And Mayor and Councilman Hayes, this is a great discussion, and specifically to both of your points, is the land use plan is not a regulatory document, it's an advisory document.
Yeah, that's kind of the way I look at it.
The advisory document will allow people to develop their land, and it was actually a great lead-in into what we're calling our toolbox, which is Chapter Eight, which basically says, yes, you can develop your land, but here is, here are some of the things that we want to, the different tools, to help keep or maintain a certain character that the community values. So in the Nashville Pike corridor, it was the residential-style homes and the trees combined with access management. There's other areas of town that we have not even come up with yet, that we may identify certain things that we want to preserve and things that we want to replicate. There is on the fringes of the community farmland that is being developed in various states. Everyone has various opinions about it, but those property owners have a vested right to do something with their property. It's established in the Constitution.
Yeah.
But we, as the community, can put forth a vision for what that can be, and we can limit to what degree that land can be developed through a variety of different tools. And so we're going to spend a little bit more time talking about some of these in just a minute. I had planned for an activity, but this can be more of a take-home activity, because it's, I'll walk you through it, and then there's a bit of a take-home exercise to it. And so I'll come back to that.
Yeah, hey, I'd like to comment on something.
This page said something, and Councilman Hayes, you know, the discussion about farmland being on our fringe areas...
You know, the discussion about farmland being on our fringe areas. And Councilman Love and Paige and I both, we all voted against that development out here. Where's it at on the corner of?
Sean, I'm not hearing you. I don't know if anyone, I, I mean, you're cutting in and out.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
I'm sorry, guys. Um, I'm talking about the development that Councilwoman Love and myself and Paige, we voted against. The Tommy and Jeff Porter piece of property. Yesterday, Tommy and Jeff Porter both come up here to visit me at my business. You know, it's that, it's that situation where mom and dad paid for that place, had a hard time paying for it. And now these boys have lived a hard life. Now they've got a chance to sell this piece of property. Are we the ones to tell them no? I did tell them no. But you know, I feel compassionate for them. They're getting up in their age and I understand they do have the right to sell it and develop that piece of property.
Well, I see in an instance like that, certainly I feel compassionate. And I think there is an opportunity for that land. I'm not sure when that time is. But for land that's not in our city limits, that we don't have to be responsible for yet with all the growth that we've had. I, I, I don't feel that pressure as I do for particularly, you know, some of the property that's been in the city limits for a long, long time. Because they've been paying city taxes, right? But, um, I mean, I do believe that there's an opportunity for that land. I just am very reluctant to bring any more land into our city with the growth that we have at this time. I mean, there is gonna be a time, but I mean, i- i- it's the same conundrum that we've looked at everywhere, you know? Is it, we, we roll the dice, are they gonna develop it one way in the county that may not be the way that we wish it could be developed? Or is it gonna be developed at the right time in the right way within the city limits? And it's, and it's hard and it's really difficult these days because, I, I mean, I've been watching this council in the city for a long time. And back 20 years ago, stuff would get approved. Well, a lot of that still has never been, never been constructed. We're seeing things get approved and the shovel go in the ground. And so it's a different time, it's a different pace and, and, and certainly a different impact than we're seeing. So these are kind of all things that we're learning.
Okay, Mayor, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pause for just a couple of minutes. Do we want to take a quick five minute break? We've been going for about an hour now. We can take a quick five minute break, allow me to refresh a couple of things here and we'll be ready to go. So everyone, we're gonna take a five minute break.
I joined a meeting late. Is this meeting open to the public?
This meeting is open to the public. It's being broadcast live across Facebook and on the city website. The public is again, welcome to use the chat function at the bottom of the screen to provide any feedback on what's being presented and or discussed. So that was a very long winded answer, Councilman Fennell. But I also wanted to make that known to any of the members that are watching on Facebook. You are welcome to join the Zoom meeting and have your comments officially recorded. If you are a member of the public and on the Zoom meeting, feel free to use that chat function at the bottom of the screen and give us feedback in real time so we understand the context of your question and or your comment. And we appreciate your participation tonight. We're on a brief four minute break.
We on break, John?
I want chicken sandwich.
No, I said, are we on break?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we on break. I'm sorry. I'm not on food.
So the chiming of the church bells lets me know that about five minutes is gone. We'll just wait for a couple of people to come back. And we'll get started on the development toolbox section of the, uh, tonight's presentation. Are there any questions at this point from anyone that's still in front of their computers?
Josh?
Yes, Councilman Fennell.
We haven't, we have, we have not officially started back yet though, have we?
We have not be, we are still being broadcast live across all channels.
Well, um, is there gonna be an opportunity tonight to bring up historic overlay up and down that strip of property? Across from Buffalo Wild Wings and Whataburger and all that stuff?
We can discuss that on the one on one meetings. But the goal tonight is not to get into specific things within our, either our existing current plan or our zoning ordinance. We're, uh, we're focusing on the future, but we can absolutely spend more time discussing that in our one on one meetings. So again, if you are joining us on Facebook and if you want your comments to be recorded into the official meeting, you have to join us via our Zoom meeting and enter those comments using the chat function at the bottom of the screen. If you're a member of the public and you are here attending our meeting, listening to these proceedings and looking at, uh, watching the presentations with us. We will have all of this material posted on our plan gallatin.org website, hopefully within the next day or two. But also your comments are appreciated at the bottom of the screen using the chat function. That'll allow us to, uh, in real time, understand the context of the discussion based on your question and or comment.
Josh, if I may step in just a second.
Please.
Mary. Uh, yeah, we've had, uh, three comments so far, comments, questions, and I've got those recorded. Uh, but I do want to tell everybody, the council, planning commission and the public mostly, that there is, there will be at least one, perhaps more than one public meeting where the public, the citizens of Gallatin will have an opportunity to comment directly about the draft comprehensive development plan once we have it, before it ever comes to the planning commission and the city council for a vote. So again, there will be at least one public opportunity for anybody and everybody to comment on a specific sentence, a specific chapter, a specific area of town, uh, or just globally about the plan if they want to. Uh, this is not the only time the public has an, uh, an ability to, to interject a thought or an idea. And those meetings will be more, they'll be about the public. You know, y'all will certainly be allowed and welcome to, to show up and interact. But those are gonna be just for the public to provide feedback to the planners and GNRC and, and to y'all if you're there listening. That's it. That's all I had to share.
Thank you, Rosemary. Uh, I'm waiting for the mayor to pop back in again.
I'm here. I'm sorry. I waved a little while ago to let you know I was here.
Oh, well, welcome back, Mayor. So we're gonna, we're gonna move on and discuss a little bit about the development toolbox. And, um, this is really more of the meat and potatoes of the execution of our land use policy. This is gonna be incorporated in Chapter Eight. Well, we wanted to give it a more fun title than what we're currently calling Chapter Seven. So this is the Development Toolbox. Uh, outline, sort of how it works is that the vision and the tools, and we're gonna use a continuous feedback process. And that is, um, we're gonna continually have discussions with the city council and planning commission about the development that the city is receiving. And is there anything that we need to change or tweak based on what we're getting? So with, we're drafting Plan Gallatin today. We hope to be making tweaks and changes to the zoning ordinance to support the policies, uh, that the city council and planning commission adopt with Plan Gallatin. And then evaluating the results, uh, through development as it's occurring. And we can either, if we're happy with the results, we can continue. If we're unhappy with the results, we can see what do we have to change? What do we have to tweak to ensure that the city is, uh, truly executing on the vision established in Plan Gallatin? A lot of what we do in planning is balance. So we have, we are, uh, as the mayor alluded to earlier, we are balancing a lot of different competing concerns, both from a humanitarian compassion standpoint, but with what the community, established community vision is. So some of the ways we do that are density, use, lot size, parking, uh, floor area ratio, landscape surface ratio and building heights. These are all very technical terms that we're gonna get into a little bit with the, the toolbox, just that everyone understands what they are. Um, this one is my favorite. So landscape surface ratio, it goes from a zero to a one. Zero would be the Death Star. There is nothing green at all whatsoever in, on the Death Star. Uh, a landscape surface ratio of one, if you're a Star Wars fan, would be an Ewok village, where the, where the Ewoks actually live in the trees. And I know Brad with GNRC is laughing right now because he is the one who put the Death Star idea in my head. So it's useful in ensuring sites have some degree of green space. And higher numbers means more, uh, more green, less building, less paved spaces on a site. Floor area ratio is probably one of the most complex, convoluted planning ideas that there is. Uh, it regulates amount of lot coverage. It can regulate stories. It regulates the relationship between the lot and the building. Uh, it does not work all that great on its own and it works in conjunction with other ideas. And we can have full hour long conversations about floor area ratio if you really, really want to. I however, will not be there. Max lot coverage is a standard that we currently use and it's expressed as a percent of the total area. It can be the under roof or total impervious surface coverage. It regulates the building, but not necessarily the green space. This is one that we currently use, uh, and we, within our zoning ordinance. And it's primarily under roof buildings, not turtle, total impervious surface coverage. Is there any questions about these couple that I've presented so far? So architectural style, uh, everyone has a different opinion on what looks good. If I polled the audience tonight, we would have, uh, we would have entirely different opinions on what looks good. Uh, may, opinions may and will vary. And that's something that some communities do regulate architecture style. Uh, we have very, 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 um, limited, uh, currently we, we don't do a lot of architecture regulation. Uh, a lot of HOAs have more specific architectural regulation based on what that initial developer's vision for the property is. Street design and typology. Uh, this is again, a very, this is where planning and engineering co, combined into a very complex uh, formula driven world. So for what, what we need to do as part of our plan is define the intended use of the street. We talked a lot about with, especially with the, uh, characters. The streetscape, the pedestrian space, the users of the space. So we, when we define who the user of that space is, whether it's a pedestrian, a bicyclist or a car, we can define the development. Lot size and density is something that we do currently use now. Uh, density does not always mean quality design. And lack of density doesn't always mean a quality design. And so what we have to ask ourselves is how does development support or hinder city goals, other city goals? We believe that we can fit and support all of these different options in different places in the city. And it's up to us, uh, up to us as the planners to present the information to planning commission and city council and help us figure out which of these are appropriate and where is the most appropriate place to put them. So here is, uh, this is the activity part. We will, this is all, this information has been emailed to all of you. And during our one on one meetings, we'll talk to you a little bit about, um, how lot size and units per acre, what are some classifications? Should it, which one of these should it fit under? Uh, from large lot all the way to multifamily, high rise condos, apartments. Somewhere on this scale. So these are a couple of examples here in town, uh, from North Hume Street, North Purdue and Hollywood Boulevard. All of these have different lot sizes. All of them have different units per acre. These are two examples from, uh, different cities. These are, this is a single, single family detached dwelling. It's, uh, on about an 8,000 square foot lot. This is an attached single family dwelling and it's a, there's about 11 units and acre per average on this, uh, on this block. So these are two other examples. Chloe Drive, um, I was hoping to get a better picture, but I, the weather hasn't been cooperating with me. Uh, this is here within town. It is a single family attached dwelling. And it has about 10.89 or about 11 units an acre roughly. And then this site is, this is Christian Towers right here in the heart of Gallatin. It has about 100 units on a one acre site and it's about 82 units per acre. So it's, uh, these, especially these ones in town, they're places that we've all seen, we've all interacted with in some form or fashion. There any sort of first blush comments on, uh, the pictures that you're seeing, the numbers that you're seeing? Okay. We can go into more detail in our one-on-one meetings that are going to be scheduled starting the 30th of November. We can go into more detail, more explanation, and potentially find more examples for you to look at and to, to help further your understanding and our understanding of, of your interpretation of what we're saying with these different ideas. So the last one, this is a, this is a three-for-one, this is park, or sorry, four-for-one. So parking location and building height, we can use these to reinforce design concepts. We can use these to reinforce different principles and ideas along corridors, number of stories, minimum, minimum building height, maximum building height. Building placement, we can use a build-to or build-from line. Currently, some places use a build-to line, some use a build-from, depending on what is the concept we want to reinforce within this corridor or this area, and that leads into building setbacks. So in the rural areas, you generally see much, much larger setbacks. You see more fields and fence rows before you see buildings. Suburban areas, you kind of, as you get closer into the center of town, you see those buildings step up closer to the street, all the way to downtown where the street, the sidewalk, and the building, there really isn't much separation between them. So some of the general themes that we've gotten from the, the feedback from the public through our different meetings. The public likes well-designed spaces. There's overall support for a more compact development form versus sprawling to and beyond city limits. That doesn't mean that everybody wants the entire city to be Christian Towers, but we, the city would have difficulties extending sewer and water to, if everyone lived on five-acre lots. So we have to balance a lot of these different ideas, and we're going to do that through Plan Gallatin and through working with all of you on these different ideas. Variety of lot sizes and home styles, and truly the goal is to create a city of interconnected neighborhood. Historically, cities, including Gallatin, grew in this fashion prior to the 1960s, where we, planners invented zoning, which had very broad separation between all of your different uses. The idea is to go back to a different form, where people have a variety of different options in both housing style, housing form, but also ultimately would have different options on how to, their transportation options to and from the things that they do every day. So this is the Development Toolbox. We will go into this in far greater detail with all of you in the one-on-one meetings and helping, helping, working with all of you so that we understand where some of these breakpoints are for density on this scale, which is ultimately going to impact the density and the different character area types.
Josh?
Yes, Councilman Alexander.
I hadn't heard you say anything about compatibility, you know, with the new development. Then you may have a old subdivision that, is there a distant requirement for a new development compared to an old development that's pre-existing?
And that's a great question. We'll get into more specifics with the zoning ordinance update, but if compatible, compatibility, neighborhood compatibility is a, we can use that as a key driving principle about how new development should fit within the existing confines. We can't get into specifics because we have a wide variety of different places in town, but we can use that as one of our guiding principles through the development of Plan Gallatin. So Suzanne, I know you're listening. Please make a note of that, and we'll make sure that that's a continuing theme through Chapter Seven and Chapter Eight. So tonight, we've given you a lot of information. There's a lot of things to think about, how all of these different tools and pieces of the pizza of Chapter Seven, how all of them fit together, and how, Chapter Eight, which is the Development Toolbox, some of the principles that we're establishing, a lot of the specifics of the Development Toolbox, specifically as it relates to landscape surface ratio, building heights, max lot coverage, we can get into generalized ranges or more specifics in the one-on-one meetings once we have a better overall idea of the city and how it breaks out. Mayor, do you have a question? Okay.
Josh, could you go back to the food for thought slide? I think it's about three or four slides back. Four slides. Yeah, there. So what I want to emphasize, and Josh, feel free to jump in here, is that we presented a lot of broad brushstrokes of concepts of land uses, and we've even mentioned a little bit about these connectors and what you might typically refer to as our transportation network. So kind of getting into what Commissioner Alexander said, is that these overlaying or this pizza analogy of land uses, there might be areas that more intense development in certain neighborhoods or certain sections of towns might be appropriate, depending on that availability of that infrastructure. So the mayor had mentioned earlier about why not allow someone on the way out in the country, they want to develop their lands. But, you know, not all of these lands, not all these properties are appropriate to develop in intense ways simply because that's what a property owner wants to do. Otherwise, you would really have no, really no need for any plan or even zoning, for that matter. You'd have Houston. So what we're trying to do, and again, we're trying to move in a direction that would preserve a lot of the surrounding community, which was a major theme that came through the scenario of planning, that we don't want sprawling development, or at least that's what the feedback that we got from these meetings was. We want compact development, and we don't want necessarily the high cost of that. So what you're probably going to get with that are the concentric ring theory of, you know, geographic, geography analysis, analytical geography, where you're going to have more intense development closer into the city, and as you get further out, you're going to have less and less dense and less and less infrastructure to support less and less dense development. So in some cases, we'll have sectors or nodes that will have concentrations of infrastructure and intensity, and those are represented by those centers, and there were activity centers, in particular, employment centers. So it will be a stackable categories of land uses where those intensities will be allowed based on the topography of the land, the natural features on the land, and infrastructure availability.
And Ms. McCord, if I may just throw this out there, I'm also concerned about the fifth district where, you know, they may have a lot of old houses. A block or so away, they got a commercial area where they got commercial business, and the homeowners, if something happened to the house, they can't rebuild it. They can't fix it back because of the area. I just have concern about that. Is that a way of us trying to drive them out?
Well, that's more of the market forces, I think, than necessarily the land uses. The land uses should be flexible enough, and the zoning will provide some more rigid standards for that. But, you know, the, I think what you might be talking about also is the structural capabilities of the home. You know, we've had a lot of situations where due to deferred maintenance or something like that, the home, the home might not be appropriate to invest more money in just to try to fix it up. And I know we have issues about that when we're working with grant programs. They just won't fund homes that are decrepit conditions and put more money into it. But that doesn't mean that there's certainly not a right to redevelop those properties, remove the former home, and reconstruct something that not only complies with the building code, but also will fit with the neighborhood. So in Nashville, of course, it's been talked for a while where these older neighborhoods with older housing stock have existed on a certain scale, and then someone comes in and buys those lots on either side of it and puts up a tall skinny, that kind of thing. You know, that's something that we will have to address in the specifics of our zoning code, but we can address that in our policies in a general manner. So there might be places where you want people to, we want to encourage people to remove some of those houses, and the tall skinnies might be an appropriate type of development to encourage there.
Thanks, Bill. Councilman Alexander, we're happy to talk to you offline if there's any specific examples. But our goal with this plan is not to displace anyone. Everyone is, is gonna, everyone that lives here is welcome and a valued member of our community. And part of what Bill was mentioning is that we have a livability section, which is going to be Chapter Six, and we're going to be working to strengthen our nonprofit sector to help with, to help keep more of our community together that's here, especially anyone that's low income. We are working to strengthen our nonprofit sector to make sure that they, they have the ability to access the resources that they need to continue to be, continue to stay valued members of our community.
I just, I just don't want, you know, anyone to be pushed out, if you will, because they can't afford to maybe build a bigger home or something, but yet still, we may not allow them to refurbish their old home. Something on that next, but I'll talk to you one-on-one on that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments about anything that we've presented this evening? Okay, so we will be meeting one-on-one with all of our city council and planning commission members about the information that's been presented tonight, and to get into a little bit more detail of questions, concerns that you had, specific feedback that we've received from you, but also to fill in some of the, some of the range criteria that we need to draft our plan for the Toolbox section. So if you could check your calendars and starting on 11:30, let us know what dates and times work for you. We're happy to meet in person. We can meet via Zoom. Suzanne Simon, she is our administrative assistant here in planning and an awesome, welcome member of our team. She'll be starting to schedule those on 11:30, so please check your calendar. Let us know what times and dates work for you, and we're happy to meet you at your place of business, or you can, you're welcome to meet us here at City Hall. Sean, is your pool heated? Because the weather's just about right that we may, we may have to do your meeting at your pool.
Oh, you're more than welcome. It's a toasty 86 degrees.
All right. We'll, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Hey, I want to say that I appreciate the planning department, Bill McCord and his staff. I mean, I think you guys really care about Gallatin, especially trying to let the public realize what we're going through here, and hopefully we can develop Gallatin in a way that everybody really likes. Thank y'all for what you're doing.
Josh, if I may, before you close it out, just let me know when I can have a minute.
Floor is yours, Rosemary.
For anybody who might have been watching this on rerun on the, on Facebook or on the city website, again, if you are watching this after the meeting is gone live, please address any comments or ideas in email to josh.king@gallatin10.gov, and we will collect comments there. There will be meetings for the public to comment on the draft plan down the road. You know, sure, it would be easier to do it in person, but we might still possibly be doing Zoom at that point. We will do our best to make it as comfortable as possible. And tonight, the planning staff focused in on really one or two chapters in a multiple-chapter plan. So you'll be hearing more down the road also about what each of the departments have, what their ideas are for what some of their needs are going to be in the future, and where you might want to place some of those physical needs, like police stations, fire stations, more parks, those sorts of things, industrial, business park property, et cetera. So there's a lot more coming, and it's really great, the participation tonight, to look at this specific area of conversation. And we look forward to hearing more from you as you meet individually with planning, because we want you to feel comfortable saying exactly what you need to say about your city and how you want it to be. So thank you very much for all of that.
So Mayor, I am going to turn the meeting back over to you if you have any parting comments and/or if you want to let everyone get home and get to their dinners.
Yes.
I think that's what people would be in favor of. You did say Bill Mayor, so I tend to be the more brief speaker. Mr. McCord, anything?
He's gone.
He's left us. I think it's time for everybody else to leave.
I don't want to hear him speak, so.
Huh?
He, he's here, but I don't have anything to speak.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, with that, everyone, thank you for being here, and we'll bid you adieu. Do go home, have a good dinner. Hey, we're not going to see each other again before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, all.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Same here. I'll be careful.
Thank all you guys for your hard work.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Oh, let me get these legs up. Start moving. Well, come on. One, two, three.